All right, good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager staff. Steve Donald, Director for the Department of Planning, Neighbors and Development. With me today to lose discussion around housing, I have Karen Damasi, who is my co-chair on the Housing Policy Steering Committee, Danielle Simpson, the Housing Inspection and Conservation Supervisor, Tony Kroger, who is my Division Manager for Planning. Throughout this presentation, they're going to kind of come in and help on a few of the points, but we have a really exciting update around our housing work here in the city of Dayton. Those four items today, we're going to start with the Housing Policy Steering Committee update, then move on to the Issue Six Housing Funds, then transition over to Housing Code Enforcement Civil Prosecution, and then lastly, the Dayton Recovery Plan Housing Investment. So again, jam-packed update, and I just want to thank, as we get into this work, that this is not just staff. This is staff, this is partners, it's residents, much of my colleagues behind me. What I want to credit is that this is really high-level innovative work while also managing day-to-day tasks, and so I give them credit for balancing both the, you know, the desire to address these really core issues while also providing service to our residents on a daily basis.
Trying to get rid of that.
Oh, hi. No, it's not, it's actually. There it is. I just had it. It's like putting, it's like growing up with an antenna, trying to hit the right angle. The mouse works right there. Just a quick recap on the Housing Policy Steering Committee. We have 12 policy areas of focus. We have one overarching steering committee made up of, again, partners, Karen is my co-chair, professional and residential partners out in the community. We have four subcommittees looking at kind of focused areas around Housing Trust Fund, Historic Property Preservation Data, and Tenants. And so what I'm really pleased to share is that over, since the launch of that steering committee and the subsequent subcommittees, to date, we had 61 items that the residents, with your support, had put forward for us to look into around a cohesive housing policy. Of those 61 items, 15 of those have been completed, 28 of those in the completed are in the bottom blocks in the orange. The underway 28 are in the green. Those are things that we are currently looking at right now, and you'll see that a little bit later as our 2025 work plan. And then lastly, 18 in the blue, the future, are things that either will come later, once we flesh out some of the earlier policy items, or things that we just have yet to start because we're focusing on other issues. One of the things I'd like to note is that some of the high-level completed items that you might recall is that from the housing policy, we used data, worked with our data subcommittee to inform our implementation of Issue Six. That's how we looked to see where would be the most opportunistic ability to leverage other funds, and so working with that data committee, we identified the communities that were going to put the Issue Six funds to use initially. Additionally, one of the items in the housing policy was around transparency. That task was around enhancing and increasing our use of portals, and to date, we've launched the Housing Condition Survey Portal, as well as our Housing Inspection Tracker. Just two of the many different portals that, working with our colleague Abby and MMB and Richard Bailey, to bring information to the public. And then lastly, you'll hear the, one of the things was the universal application that Dayton Home Repair Network just mentioned to you. We are, that was a item in theirs, having a singular simplistic point of entry into the home renovation repair world, so everybody's on the same page. As I noted, and not for the sake of time, but the items that were currently in our 2025 work plan, and I guess it's funny saying it because most of the people involved are volunteers, and so we have a pretty hearty work plan that we're moving into, but again, they're really dedicated, and so the core areas of our work as it's ongoing is around streamlining the development process. My Deputy Director Emily Crowe just led a session with our developers around how can we better work together to streamline that process? Activating Land for Housing, thanks to you all, you granted us the ability to transfer properties to the land bank so that we could support future housing through their Welcome Home program. Aligning Plans, Goals, and Incentives, again, our Planning Division did a great job with their comprehensive plan. We're looking broader beyond us, a way of incorporating other work within the city and region as we have a cohesive look at housing. Strengthening our partnerships and advocacy, I think some of the members on the steering committee have a greater skill set for that, and really helping us be part of and finding our voice when it comes to advocacy for federal and state programs and funding. Targeting public funding effectively, again, an ongoing process of leveraging funds from various sources and making sure that they get put into use where we need to. Leveraging data, this is really one of the exciting things. I think we're making just huge strides in our shared data approach among us, our colleagues in Water, citywide, Montgomery County Land Bank, Montgomery County itself. That is a huge step in terms of seeing the whole picture for our city. Code Enforcement, again, we're doing some great work that you'll hear a little bit later, and expanding access to home repair loans, we'll talk a little bit later about that as well, and then prevent displacement, promoting awareness, again, some working with the subcommittee on some opportunities to ensure people have a place to stay. And then lastly, the fun part, promoting city living and neighborhood value. I feel like our staff and colleagues and friends do that all the time, but there is a coordinated approach around really selling why it is so great to live and invest here in the city of Dayton. Moving on, Issue Six Housing Funds, want to kind of provide an update on where that program is heading, so the focus of these funds are around, you know, looking at home repair for homeowner occupied properties, and we've heard you, the desire is to focus on those properties that have a rating of three or four. We know that we have a significant number when I presented that to you, so we're kind of providing some criteria around this, is looking at the three or fours, looking at really the envelope, you know, making sure that we get the roof, the walls, the windows, foundation taken care of. We are close to finalizing, we have looked at the whole landscape and have identified that our funds would be best placed serving populations that cannot be served either through our CDBG federal funds and/or the work that our colleagues have, are doing with the Home Repair Network, and so looking at forgivable deferred loan terms, no interest, looking at a dollar-for-dollar matching program for those above 120% AMI. So again, we hear, like, the voters voted for this, and we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to participate, and we want to make sure that we weren't duplicating programs already in place by many of our partners doing this work. So this approach here, we are confident that we have really addressed the whole spectrum. We're right now looking at a maximum repair cap of $30,000 per home, and I will say for those that are above the 120, that if it's a dollar-for-dollar, that'd be a $60,000 investment. So I will be honest, we will monitor it, and if that's effective, I know talking to some of the partners that have been doing this work, it varies. They've had homes that have done 10,000 to 15,000, and others that have gone up to 80. So we will, we'll be monitoring, so see is 30,000 appropriate number. We know that by lowering or raising that number will affect how many units we can serve. And then our geographic limits, year one and four of the program will be in the Welcome Home Program neighborhoods of Fairview, Dayton View Triangle, Wolf Creek, and Madden Hills. Again, leveraging that investment from the land bank on their rehab and new construction in those communities, as well as our partners with the Pathways program building new in there. So this is about stretching that money to have a significant impact. Additional criteria, making sure that they are current, property taxes are current or under a payment plan, and then lastly, to ensure that we are not either overstepping or stepping on or duplicating, we will have applicants use the Dayton Home Repair Network Common Application, and we've been in talks with Eileen and her team about the how, by doing that, putting everybody in that one application, we can then see which programs are best suited for their needed work. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle to talk about our Housing Code Enforcement Civil Prosecution program.
Good morning, everybody. June 2025, we have implemented our civil penalty process. The first warning notice that we issued is very similar to the warning notices that we issue currently. The differences are indications that there will be fees applied for the penalty, and also that the penalty, application of the civil penalty does not exclude you from also being charged with criminal charges for similar or same violations. So that began in June of 2025. As of July 16th, we have been able to, after the 10-day compliance period has expired on these items, we've been able to implement the actual citation process of the civil prosecution. It indicates specific photos of the violations, the code violations in which were violated details, and it also indicates a due date or compliance date that is 20 days from the date of issuance. Within that 20 days, it is expected that citizens have the ability to pay, which is indicated also on the back, how to pay, where to pay within the city, and also there is an opportunity for them to apply for an administrative hearing on the second page, also if they are in dispute of the violations that were charged. So we are probably about 15 violations to 20 violations in on implementing the civil prosecution, and it's going pretty well. And then for those individuals who have chosen to participate in the hearing process, we do have a hearing, administrative hearing scheduling letter that'll give them indications of when their hearing is scheduled within that 20-day period of time and where they are able to appear. Luckily, all this information has been composed into our Connections Newsletter that I actually received at my own home just this week, so a lot more of those details are enclosed inside there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Danielle. All right, next, I'm going to turn to Tony Kroger, Division Manager for Planning, to talk about the housing investments.
Well, good morning, everyone. I probably get the most fun part of this presentation, that is showing the status report for various housing programs that you all have approved over the years, and, you know, given an indication of where we are with some very exciting projects. Towns at Wright Dunbar on Third Street is well underway, as I'm sure that you've seen in fact, the ARPA component, funding component of that project is complete and closed out, and construction underway on those 26 units. There's construction on two homes in Edgemont with our partner Habitat for Humanity. We've had the one home complete on Miami Chapel. Home improvements, county through County Corp, has resulted in 56 homes being improved and stabilized, and that's mirroring basically the end of its funding, but we were happy to get 56 homes stabilized. There's construction underway in Wolf Creek, and we'll show pictures of all these, by the way, subsequent to these more boring slides here, but the homes are underway under construction, and Wolf Creek, down payment assistance continues at this point, such has been provided to 18 home buyers. This week, work will begin on the vacant home rehab program in partnership with the land bank, where homes that would otherwise have been demolished are basically being saved, brought back to life, and stabilizing the surrounding vicinity. Out there at the former Clyburn Manor site, Flats South Park with our partners Ober at Flats Developer LLC, you've probably seen the site preparation occurring out there. We are supporting that with ARPA funds to get that site to a ready state for development. We have ARPA funds in the perspective and future center city construction. From an ARPA standpoint, the funds are supporting soft costs such as architecture engineering work, and they are invoicing for that at this point. Wolf Creek Levy is an interesting one. The big project hasn't started to lay back the levy and make it more approachable in the Wolf Creek neighborhood, but there's actually been some progress towards that with some utility work, and I'll talk about that here shortly. We suspect that building plans will be submitted for the 19 units at Kiwi and Valley for the Point project with our partner Civitas, so that will hopefully get underway this fall. So all of these projects, all the projects on the previous slide were part of the home improvement program being led by, managed essentially by the Planning Division, specifically Project Manager Ellen Sizer, or myself managing the suite of projects, if you will, with our wonderful partners. On the next slide are more of the external awards through the Dayton Recovery Plan, including Kinship Care Housing, which is under construction on Alaska Street. The program with Habitat for Humanity through, for critical roof repairs has resulted in 60 such critical repairs. Home improvements through rebuilding has resulted in the stabilizing and improving of 89 properties, and Hoover Senior Lofts is under construction. So all of these programs, all these sub-recipient agreements, all the discussions that we had at City Commission meetings, is really brought forth some incredible programs stabilizing neighborhoods and bringing forth positive impact in our neighborhoods. All right, now for the really fun part. So we're starting in Wolf Creek here, these, there's two homes under construction right now on William Street and two on First Street. I hope you've had a chance to get out to the Wolf Creek neighborhood recently because it's, it's having a moment between the new construction out there, all the great abatement work that our Housing Division is doing. This is, you know, and I always said, every neighborhood's going to have its moment, and every neighborhood has had a moment, Wolf Creek's is right now. It is really exciting to see out there. So these homes are really great out there, the County Corp is doing. RDA Group was the architect on it. I think they fit in really well, but they also kind of have a modern flair to them. These are the two next to each other on William Street. Go ahead, Steve. This is a new home along with an accessory dwelling unit behind it. This is on Second Street in Wolf Creek, so this is just north of the Towns at Wright Dunbar. So yeah, that's the interesting thing about this particular site is that it has the primary structure as well as another housing unit behind it that is attached to the garage, so that's, that's certainly well underway. We, I know everyone has seen the Towns at Wright Dunbar, there'll be 26, of course, single-family attached units out there on Third Street. I mean, talk about knocking design out of the park. And we think about all, since 2012, all that's happened in the downtown vicinity and its surrounding neighborhoods with Sims Development, we think about how the first buildings looked and how this building looks. We've all come a long way. You couldn't have done this better, so we're really excited about this. Out there at, in Edgemont, I mentioned the one completed house on Miami Chapel, that's on the left. On the right is the two homes currently under construction on Maitland Street, so important new housing development in Edgemont, which of course hadn't happened for many, many, many years before this, is of course being supported with Dayton Recovery Plan funds as well. I mentioned the pre-development work occurring out there on, I believe that's Nathan Street in the South Park neighborhood. We supported the earthwork and basically addressing unsuitable soils for future development, some work to remove a unnecessary cul-de-sac that was left there after Clyburn Manor was demolished, and so that work was of course necessary to prepare the land for development, and so now Greater Dayton Construction Ober can move forth with 88 housing units at that site. Well, this is, this is a really great one. Kinship Care out there, this is Alaska Street in Old North Dayton, this is 26 three-bedroom units that will provide housing for those families in the children's services system. It's basically a series of duplexes that is well underway out there on Alaska Street. Oh, yeah, so I mentioned Wolf Creek, and we've always talked about, all right, it's time to lay back the levy and help connect up the neighborhood to the water course of the same name, and the big project hasn't started yet, that'll be led by Miami Conservancy District, but I do want to say that Dakota Street has, the work has been initiated to essentially accommodate that levy layback, because there's utility work actually being done in the vicinity of the levy, and somebody had a really efficient idea of what to do with all this excess dirt, and they said, why don't we start that, that levy layback project? So, so that dirt will all stay there, that's all been compacted, and ultimately, the levy will be laid back considerably more than that, and create essentially an open space amenity for the neighborhood and better connected to the water course itself. That's just the extent of my update. Hand it back over.
Yeah, so thank you, Karen, Tony, Danielle, for your updates, and City Manager and team for allowing us to provide this really great, you know, check-in on all of the housing work that's happening out in our neighborhoods.
Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you. And Commissioner Fairchild, I had said earlier, because I thought we were going to have less than our full quorum or majority here in and out, that we would hold questions, but I think, given that we have some time, given that we have almost all of you, we can open it up for questions, and I'll just ask Emily to take question, take the question, so we can make sure that Commissioner, Mayor Mims receives the information.
That sounds good. So I turned it on to my colleagues. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. Dixie, for extending that courtesy to post questions. Just a couple of questions. First, I just wanted to commend the staff, thank you for all of the work and the leadership for all of the work that you all are doing in this space. This is something I'm very passionate about, and so with that, I know you mentioned that there's one steering committee, there's four subcommittees. Can we get an update on where those various committees, subcommittees are in this process? The Housing Trust Fund, which is something that I've been pushing for, have legislation in the Law Department, I hope is being reviewed, but just give us an update, excuse me, as to where they are in the process, what are they looking at, what are some of the paying points or whatever have you for those four subcommittees? That would be helpful. And then what are the listed items that have been completed? I know you mentioned there was a total of 61, there are 15 that are completed, and then there are another, another, excuse me, 18 that are in the process or future plan. So give us an idea of what those plans and what those completed items are, and then, if you could, provide us with the overall plan. Does someone have a question? All right, very good. What are the, the work plan itself? If you can give us a copy of that work plan, the 2025 Housing Policy Steering Committee work plan, that would be helpful. And then just for clarification, I know this was made and it was recommended some time ago with the, the Issue Six allocation, the first year, the 650,000 will be used to leverage the Welcome Home program, and that is, again, just for clarification, that is only for that one year. We still have to decide as to how those additional funds.
We're, based off of the need, we're.
So when do, go ahead, finish.
Yeah, so it being an eight-year funding stream and looking at the need and the investment from all the partners, we were, and the fact that there's four neighborhoods, that we were, we recommended that the first four years of that be focused in those four areas, and then the second four, we open up to city, the city in general. So again, trying to leverage that 650 a year and hearing from the partners about their significant investment in those areas that we felt that, so that we could match that as a contributor to those.
Commissioner, there's, there's a packet that will be in City Commission calendar in a couple of weeks, and so you will get the recommendation, but the recommendation was formulated with all of the different housing partners and looking at all of the other different funding sources where we have an ability to impact and stabilize housing. I think you'll recall from the work session we did about conditions, it was very clear that attacking those threes, and there were about 5,000 of them, was a priority, and if you only focus on it for one year, you're not going to have that great of an impact, but two, the Welcome Home program is a multi-year funded program with a lot of funding from the land bank, and so us being able to leverage their funding into the city because they could go elsewhere is also a high priority, but you will have a full, full packet of information to review prior to, as we are rolling towards bringing it to calendar.
I appreciate that additional context because that was not what we originally agreed to and what was shared with, with us. What was initially shared was the first year that we were going to allocate the 650,000 to the Welcome Home program, and then there was going to be a reassessment based on the steering committee's recommendation that would then be brought to, to this body, to the Commission for Review, although I don't have any qualms with it, but again, that was not initially communicated to us in terms of how we were going to use those dollars. So we will receive a packet that will have the additional information as to what the recommendation would be for the next three years, a total of four years.
Total of four years. Since that, since our conversations, our last conversations, Welcome Home program got more funding.
Right.
And so it is about, again, continuing to leverage and bring that, make sure that money goes into the city.
Okay. Again, no qualms with that whatsoever. The only thing is, is of concern is that it's only, remind me again, do we have any flexibility in moving those or utilizing those dollars outside of those four areas, or are we married to those four designated areas, the Wolf Creek, Madden Hills, Fairview, and Dayton View Triangle? If we're leveraging those additional dollars, can we use those dollars elsewhere where there are in fact those threes that have been identified?
So I think what we'll do in the packet is show the need in those areas and also the investment from the, all the other partners to give the whole picture as to why we believe committing those four neighborhoods for four years is the best approach, but I'll provide that data for, you know, just analysis, because our belief is that, obviously, as the City Manager said, getting the land bank to commit, Welcome Home to that, and then getting Pathways to commit their 30, so we felt that it was a good faith that we would then put this, but I'll provide that data to you all for analysis.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you. And if you could, the last question that I have is with the presentation that we had from Ms., this client this morning, the AES disadvantaged dollars, so, and you're correct in regards to like all of the, the great momentum that is taking place in the Wolf Creek neighborhood, but what I've noticed is we have these brand-new structures that are being constructed, and they're surrounded by blight, they're surrounded by, in addition to property owners who may have deferred maintenance. So what are we doing? Are we on the ground? We having those conversations, and isn't an opportunity, is it an opportunity for use those AES dollars to assist some of those existing property owners?
I think Danielle can talk about some of the efforts being done out there right now, and you may have seen a couple really bad blight instructors come down very recently at Sweeten, was it Sweetman?
Sweetman, yeah.
So getting those downwards, but to talk about.
So there's so many different things going on in Wolf Creek, so we are also managing condition-wise, making sure we're getting those demolitions of those spaces that are ready for development. Secondarily, I have issued a commission for inspectors to go out to address the blight. We've started on Second, First Street in Grimes to identify some of the outdoor storage and violations that exist there. Unfortunately, there, we're at a slave to time at that time, so we have to kind of wait for the citizens to get their due diligence and their compliance dates, but we are fully functioning right now and enforcing in that area.
And providing them what resources to go along with so they can be fully compliant.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
And Commissioner, to your point, that's where we'll work with Eileen on those homes that are owner-occupied, that are eligible, based off their household income, we'll work with her to determine whether those, her funds are better suited, or if they exceed those limits, whether they're our Issue Six, because that would be a targeted neighborhood.
Excellent, thank you. And last question, and it may be off-topic, but it's in regards to housing. Where are we with the, the senior renovations for the, the senior units on, on Grand and Salem, right on the corner? I know we had with the, the church, is it the Church Family Association? Yeah, residents, yes, yes, yes. It's complete?
It's complete as of the end of last year, yes. Are you talking about the, the high-rise?
The high-rise, yes.
Commercial before?
Yes.
Yeah, it's complete.
So what is the update on the, the rental space on the street?
They are actively working with a couple of different entities to try and get a tenant in there.
Okay.
But they have utilized it as community space within the last year that I'm aware of, just as like gathering if they have some kind of event for the residents, but they are still actively marketing it to different organizations. I think they talked about changing the price point to try and make it a little more feasible for smaller organizations, but we can give you an update.
Okay, thank you, and this may be trivial, but like the corner itself, just the aesthetics in the flower pots, if we could do something to clean it up and to make it more attractive. I don't know who that may go to, but I know that's very trivial, but yes.
Commissioner, if I may, I went to the Salem Avenue Business Association meeting yesterday, and they have a tenant, one tenant, they've divided those spaces into two tenant spaces, and they do have a tenant that they're working with, and they're, so they're really close to having a lease, and I believe they're closing.
Okay, great, thank you, and that's all I have, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, great work. I didn't see any dollar amount, so I'm curious, I mean, it feels like it's really substantial and good, I was curious what the dollar investments have been and how much we've leveraged. I was curious what the dollar investments has, have been and how much we've leveraged from other entities. I didn't know if we could provide that. And along those lines, we had $55 million advocated for neighborhoods out of the ARPA dollars. I haven't seen like a total accounting of that 55. I mean, I've seen broad categories, but down to the projects kind of level, I didn't know if we could get that.
Yeah, we can definitely get the, the amounts associated with it. I, I know that the first slide that I showed with the table, which is the Housing Improvement Program, which includes Towns at Wright Dunbar, Edgemont, Homes, Home Improvements, Wolf Creek, Down Payment Systems, Vacant Home Rehab, Flats at South Park, Center City, Wolf Creek Levy, and the Point amounts to 12 million.
Okay.
But we have it all broken down.
And, and Commissioner, next week is the financial briefing and there will be an ARPA update. So you will see those buckets identified in, in the funding updates.
Okay. And for the $55 million, is that down to kind of the, this level of projects? Okay, okay, great.
And that will be, as I mentioned, transparency. We have been working with our partners in MNB to update that information on the portals, on the Dayton Recovery Portal. So that way as these invoices are coming in and getting paid, that we're, those numbers are reflected out there. So for the public to follow along as well.
I saw the information on the civil penalties work. And it went into effect June. It seemed like we passed that a while ago. I was, with, could you give me an explanation of what took it so long to kind of get up and function?
Well, actually, so with our compliance states, we do, we are required in the implementation of the policy to submit a warning notice with a compliance date of 10 days. So at the, actually, the compliance date expired probably at the beginning of July where we began to issue the citations. So there is a gap of time or a space in time to allow for compliance. And then also there was a little bit of time we had to lapse in there to make sure we had an administrating hearing officer to assure that we weren't issuing citations and not be able to afford them their right to a hearing.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. And then I'm sure we've looked at this and, but do we have an assessment on the safety of relaxing the levy, given the increase of flooding that we're seeing across the nation?
Certainly, Commissioner, and we've been working with them. They're actually going to ultimately manage the program. And it really, from an MCD perspective, improves flood protection. They'll, they'll know the quality of the soil that will be used. It makes it easier to maintain. A less steep levy is actually more stable than a steep levy. So MCD is all on board with us.
Great. I appreciate that. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
We all love flood protection. I promise.
That was actually the question I was going to ask. You know, I've been down there on the levy and it's, it's really dramatic change from what it used to be when I used to kind of hang out in that area as a kid. But having said that, I, I just was really impressed with, with the new development opportunities. And I think it's really going to attract some, some significant development. Are you already hearing some talk about?
People are, yeah. You know, it's, it's, I think, taking a lot of momentum forward as part of kind of a greater Wright Dunbar moment.
Right.
You know, yeah, it's very exciting.
Well, good work. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just a couple of points. First, I just want to thank you all for like the many faceted strategy here. This is, I know as it was planned, and I think it's coming together really nicely to, to provide housing at such a, a tough moment for, for our residents. So I really appreciate all of you and all of our partners coming together to do this. Just seeing the list of projects underway and completed, I, I'm really proud. And I want to thank my colleagues, those who are here and not, for the sort of unending and unsworn support of making sure we're doing this. So I, I really appreciate it, you all. First question I have is, you mentioned we have had 15 or 20 people in the civil process so far. Any, any surprises? Have we had a hearing? Like what, what are things, how are things going? I'm really curious.
So we planned it out so that we began issuing the citations approximately July 16th. And with that 20 days on there, we have to give them an opportunity to pay. And so I believe the administrative hearing officer is beginning in August. We've had some technological hiccups, things that we noticed that we needed to modify maybe with the citation or the process, but we haven't heard back from the citizens yet. So we're still pending.
I want pins and needles. Let me know. The second is, is peripheral. We did, you all did a really thorough housing grading. We did a survey. How long is that good for? Like when, when we have to do it again? Is it, do you have any idea now that we're a little bit into it?
Yeah, we, I think, agreed every two years. So we're going back out this September.
Your staff's gonna be like, oh, no.
Good news. We have a lot of new faces. We filled out our entire inspection ranks. And so we have a lot of new eager individuals. But no, I think that when we looked across the landscape as to the ways, some people do it every year, others do it every five. We thought two was actually, I think, really what we needed in terms of utilizing the need for that data with all, you know, again, with our housing policy work and other stuff. So we've made some improvements. Again, I think, I think a lot of times with our work, it's more than just my department, you know, working with Public Works, Richard Bailey, MNB. And so we have, we're implementing some changes to actually expedite that review. So we're going to cut down on the kind of the paperwork involved and actually have immediate upload from the field.
Great.
I think achieving that every two years will be possible and more effective. And we'll have more information in real time.
I love that. And I think two years is probably appropriate, given how aggressively we're, we're working now and how much we count on that data to be inputs for you all. So I, I 100% agree. Any further questions, Commissioners? All right, I'll turn it back to you, the City Major. Thank you all. All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.